Excuse. Okay, welcome, welcome to the work session. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to three A review of our current year budget and Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor. So when this meeting was called by the council at the February meeting, there are a lot of new faces on the Budget Committee, including staff. So we just wanted to make sure everybody had the proper picture of what this current year looks like. And just to kind of go over it where we're at. Jamie was able to provide a great breakdown of where we're at this year based on our funds. So everything was good to me. I don't see any issues. I did have a question earlier that Kevin answered about transfers. But outside of that, everything looks pretty good compared to where we're at this year. Now, this is actually going to be seven months. So about fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent of the year done with our budget. So everything is lined up here, but this is a good picture to keep in mind when we talk actual numbers at the next meeting. So you can kind of take this decipher what you may. Again, if you were on the Budget Committee last year and had a question about a specific overall goal of a fund, what we can or cannot do. A lot of that information is provided in the budget process, which is going to be your second handout. You can ask myself, hey, what is this look like? Or reach out to Mayor if you have any question of myself, and we can get an answer for you.
Can I just ask, we were talking about this a little bit, right?
Correct, yes.
So the year-to-date remaining on, I think on the expenses, I understand, on the revenues, that just mean how much is left?
Correct, yes.
So like the very first one, it's fourteen point seven seven percent. We have collected roughly eighty-five percent of what we need in there. That's all that's left.
Correct, I had that same question earlier. I'm used to it being the flip to the.
Right.
The flip, so.
Well, revenue expenses is, okay.
Yeah, there's actually, I think, one or two that are pretty close to zero. One of them is actually negative because our revenue got to exceeded what our.
Oh, okay.
Our budgeted, so you will notice that on a couple of them.
So this is where we're at. I'm gonna use, we're gonna use this obviously as our guiding light as we start looking at next year's budget. And obviously with having this here will kind of provide us where we're at. So if we do ask for increases on certain light items, we're just gonna kind of base off the issue to see where we're at. So.
Then link this to the three B.
I'm trying.
Are we on to three B then? Are you?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion of goals and spending parties for the next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
So also in your packet, in the back end of the general fund, I mean, the expenditure and revenue report, we have two items that the Budget Committee and the Council approved last year. They're our American Rescue Plan Act, directives, and then also our capital improvement plan. If we want to attack the capital improvement plan first, which is going to be our last page, the green are going to be in progress. We've made some headway into that. Whites are ones that we haven't really addressed yet, or there's been no actual groundbreaking or anything physically done yet, minus just research or discussions about. Red is going to be improved. We have one, sorry, completed, which is the Madison Street project that's been completely done this year. And then the orange are going to be not started or not known in terms of needing extra money. We need more, we need additional insight on. So that's where we're at on that. Most of the green in progress ones, like the water meter upgrades, we discussed in February's council meeting, where the initial ask was, it actually turned out to not be enough is what we needed. So when we talk about next year projects, we'll bring that up. The second reservoir, like I mentioned at the council meeting, that's going to be done fairly soon, at least. The administrative side of things, street repairs, we actually discussed that at the last council meeting. So there are things that we have here that are kind of in progress. And then the whites are ones that we're just still discussing on that. So. Any questions on the capital improvement plan for this current fiscal year?
I'm just wondering why the bridge street crossing at ninety-nine is pushed off again? I thought that that was funded last year for a project to be started last year.
So it is funded for this current year. When I spoke with our engineer, there were some concerns that he needs to get with his team and the state on because of traffic counts and how they can actually situate it properly in a right of way. Because I think the overall goal was to do something like traffic key, traffic light, or whatever. This is like the first step on.
No traffic light, just so you know. ODOT said, no, help.
Why not? And that's what I did.
Crosswalk. And the reason I ask is because that's been pushed three years in a row.
Yes. So it's here. I, when I put this basis on board, and he mentioned that he has concerns on the feasibility of the location. And he was going to get with ODOT on that. He says, let me know as soon as I can. So if I have anything, any additional information by the next, we'll have our Budget Committee meeting. I'll bring that to you all and see how we need to go about that.
I think that would be helpful.
Is that number four you're talking about?
Yes, number four.
Which is, yeah, that, your notes on the far right kind of echo what you just said.
Yes.
Construction concerns, not a budget concern.
Right, just because it's not in green, so it's not in the works.
Yeah.
Like, okay, wait a minute, why is this not being regarded?
I have a question about that. So it, so that's on ninety-nine. Is that not ODOT's responsibility? Don't they cover that on repairs and stuff on ninety-nine?
Surfacing project, the whole ninety-nine, they covered one, which was put down.
Okay.
At the other end or a safe, because it's better access for the school. And so we petitioned very hard, and there was a pushback to actually have them pay for it or to put it in at that time. And for various reasons, ODOT said, our project is too far in the process for you to add that at this point.
Oh, okay.
So it was pushed off, but that's why it's been pushed off for three years in a row.
Two years, so two years of that wasn't because of construction. This year, we're just waiting on kind of where we're at and what happens. So, and if not, so with the capital improvement program, for those who don't, who don't really, whoever had, looked at it before, it's kind of our guiding light on our big, on our bigger projects. So just because something's one, two, three, or four, that doesn't mean that's what the priority is. This is just where we're at and how we, and how we manage them into the flow of things, so.
And again, just because it's not green, I'm like, hello, why is it not green?
It's trying hard to get to green.
Okay.
Yes, and then some, there's some other, some of the other white ones may need additional funds. And I can talk about it because, okay, so it's this fiscal year. So when I spoke with the team and with Gordon, we're probably, I know on Project Ten, we're probably gonna need an extra forty thousand dollars based on initial estimates. And then water main extension, the Park Avenue, is an action eight-inch loop now on number twelve. So they're saying that fifty thousand dollars may increase. And then also, we on number. Second, on number eleven, the cybersecurity, we're gonna meet with our cybersecurity team this week, our IT folk. And then also, because EPA has kind of mandated some things at our wastewater treatment plant when it comes to security. So that thirty-five thousand dollars that was budgeted for, to tack on to the additional sewer equipment may go up too, depending on what we hear from our IT people and what the requirements are. So some, there may be some additional funds we may need to shore up in probably June, right, Mayor, June, if we need to?
Yeah, or depending on if we implement projects a little bit sooner, but yeah.
So we may need additional money, but I think that made this come down to a prioritization schedule with council and myself on how we want to do that. And then, I don't know where we're at on number thirteen. So I know thirteen, there's a digital reader board for City Hall. But I think, as I'm gonna talk about here in a little bit, I think with plans for City Hall, I don't know if we want to spend forty-five thousand dollars on a reader board. And I know there's been discussion on using, getting a monument sign. I just don't know what we want to do with that while we have this here. We have a great sign, but our City Hall may not look the best. That's just my, that's just my.
Phrase that's gonna go up then.
So something to think about for the next meeting, if we want to redirect that forty-five thousand dollars to something else, or we want to still push it forward.
That's been the give and take, back and forth at the Budget Committee meetings every year for the last four years, just so you know. The first person to say that.
So it's actually longer than that. It just goes way, it's silly.
Can I, can I ask, has it been a council? Has it been a city hall? Has it been a citizen request that we have a reader board? Because once it's on there, I could see people take sides, but.
Last couple of years, Iowa was a big proponent of pushing it off. The original plan was just to replace the sign and leave the pole there, just like replace the sign.
Well, at one point, there was some grant money available. If we took initiative to do that, and then because it didn't happen, the grant money fell away, but that was the original push. Yes, that was the original push for us.
There was back and forth about, they said the sign grandfathered in because it was the same sign. They were just replacing the sign and the pole would be there.
Yeah.
I didn't buy that.
But once you change the schematics, it changes the requirements on the permitting and whatnot. But I've heard, I've heard different stories, but that's something, if we're looking at.
Building, there's no point to invest on.
I just don't think it's.
Do we think it's gonna happen in the next fiscal year?
No.
The sign of the building.
Neither.
That's a great point.
If it's not, I mean, should it stay on the CIP?
And that's, and so when we start talking about the additional money we may need for the, for number ten and twelve, maybe that forty-five thousand dollars can go to there. And then we also have some additional concerns coming up on the ARPA stuff. So and then lastly, number six, the bio solids, that gets done every other year. And speaking and confirming with Mark and with Ron, it's not needed this year, but we do need affluent screens at the wastewater treatment plant. So that can knock off a major need for there, so we just kind of take that give and take on that, so.
You can use general funds for street and water projects.
What are you looking at?
Instead of digital reader board for end wall.
General fund money can be used for anything, but you can't do the transverse. So you can't go one direction, up the other, water sewer or other stuff.
I just know that water took out a loan from the general fund, so. So, sorry, curious. Is it, is it water enterprise that has to stay on its own? So it couldn't take money from?
It can borrow, it can borrow money, which is what it did.
Well, yes, the water fund borrowed, it was an interfund loan from the general fund. And it's also budgeted, so it is being paid back to the general fund.
So unlike water, the street can take from the general fund.
Well, can't take.
The general fund money can pay for anything, yes. Money that's budgeted in sewer, water, and street can only be used for those purposes.
So that's where we are with the capital improvement plan. Does anybody have any questions about that, any concerns?
I think I'd have a concern if we did talk about reallocating the miller. Because I think if you're talking about replacing City Hall or doing anything like that, you should keep that in City Hall and let water figure out how to paper itself. So I mean, we've been subsidizing water pretty long already. That's what the rate study's for. So I know we're not really getting into budget, but I wouldn't throw out that idea that digital reader board could support any of those other projects. I think it needs to stay in-house and support something here at City Hall.
Okay. And when we talk numbers at the next meeting, we maybe go more into that.
Yeah.
Anything else on that?
I'd be a way to get closer to the City Hall goal to use those funds that are really just needed as part of it.
All right, so on the preceding page, the American Rescue Plan Act. Just so kind of everybody knows where we're at versus what we're looking at. So on the un, so on the unprogrammed, as mentioned in the February City Council meeting, the meter upgrades. All right, can't talk about that. Unprogrammed is items we still have pending. If you take this and look at home, there's some certain figures that you can look at.
We're just talking, you're still learning about whole redemption, that's a different topic, right?
So there's just things there. You can take a look at it. But meter upgrades, the UV system, which we kind of talked about the last meeting, we're actually able to save significant amount of money by actually doing everything in-house and have Ron and the team take care of that, so we had some extra additional funds there. Headworks, GIS mapping. So you'll see some of those figures and some of the things that have been worked on with the ARPA money. So we'll be discussing that at the next meeting to see where we need to be and how we want to accomplish it, if we want to still keep with these programs.
ARPA money has a deadline, right?
Yeah, it has to be spent by May twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, but it has to be designed, I think, and then purchased or approved it by twenty-four.
Yeah, this is, if.
I think this is just for the second portion of that grant.
Right, but you, there's a standard deadline and proofed and.
I thought it had to be appropriated by twenty-twenty-four, and then then spent by twenty.
Two years later.
Yeah.
They asked us, hey, what's your guideline for spending?
This is the last time you're having this conversation.
Yes, we should, yeah, this will be the last time, so.
Is there, sorry, you're not going into figures? Is that because of the type of meeting?
Yeah, because this is the, because when it was requested to do it, the work session would be better, because then we didn't have enough time to actually publish like a Budget Committee thirty-day notice. Work session, we kind of go over things. You take this back with you, you look at it, and then hopefully it'll appear better for the first Budget Committee meeting on April seventeenth. So this is where we're at. The biggest thing is, since we have all the new people here, Mr. Shaw, Mayor, a couple of new Budget Committee members, I want them to see where we're at year-to-date, what the numbers mean, and then the big projects.
Okay.
So we can discuss this, so they're not coming in here dry as a bone when we had that discussion in April.
Perfect.
So, and if something were to happen, and after those two meetings, that disorder of meetings were to be needed, we would probably need to know though, it's like ahead of time, because we have to have, actually publish those meetings ahead of time, so.
These, these are updated COGS figures.
Yes, these are updated COGS as of this morning, but we can't talk that.
Where's the whole one?
The old, which on ARPA?
For the unprogrammed.
Well, these are all, these are all.
I think those numbers are the same.
Yeah, these numbers are the same. I was just adding, I just took some certain figures that were on the piece of paper, and I had to do some arithmetic.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, are they changed or are they the same?
They are the same except for the UV, the UV system, and I actually bumped up the meter upgrades.
That's what I thought.
Sorry, so the previous, so we're talking this fiscal year, this fiscal year, the ARPA had.
This year was just based on initial first round.
There we go. Yeah, so this year, we had four hundred and thirty-nine thousand unprogrammed meter upgrades, or one hundred and seventy thousand. And we discussed that with council in February, that's only one-third. And even our one-third, we had to put an additional like twenty thousand dollars on the contractor and whatnot, so it was about two hundred thousand dollars. And then our UV system was budgeted for two hundred thousand. But with staff, we're able to cut that down to twenty because of looking at planning long-term for the wastewater treatment plant, which you and I kind of talked a little bit about last week. And then the headworks was actually quoted at one twenty-seven, but now we're getting quotes for about one sixty. And then the GIS mapping, I bumped up a little bit because I got some GIS mapping done in Kansas, and it was about twenty-five, so a thousand. And then I also took out that municipal software, the twenty percent. I know that was discussed in the past, but I think the twenty-five thousand dollars could probably go to something else that's probably more of a critical need right now, so.
Until you can't find something. Can you send out the side-by-side of your changes?
I can do that here.
Once I can do it, so, Jimmy?
Yeah, once we can talk numbers.
Yeah.
I'm just curious to see what the percent up and down is gonna be, because I don't think it's consistent. Just visually.
Okay, yes, it's in terms of.
I mean, like, we'll just, why no, like, the UVs are significantly down, yet headworks go significantly up. Meter just from first phase to second phase looks like a significant difference, which I know there's different quantities. But trying to figure out what that is, like, wow, that project counted up quite a bit, or that one jumped down quite a bit. But without the side-by-side.
I can, I can mail something out. On the meter upgrades, when the, I'm told from when the price was quoted before last year's budget meeting, like in January, obviously, the meters have gone up, and then with the UV system, so dramatically down. Because we, when we looked at originally two hundred thousand dollars, there was a cost of, what is it gonna take for a brand-new UV system? And when we started talking about, hey, we're already at the max of the wastewater treatment plant, spending two hundred thousand dollars on something that's gonna last twenty-five, thirty years for something we're only really gonna have max another eight to ten years, we were able to spend twenty and get that work knocked out. So we had that extra hundred eighty thousand dollars there that we could put into other things, then headworks went up twenty-seven thousand. So that price was, that code was probably about a year, year and a half old, so.
Well, as we talk about budget upcoming, you're gonna have the same thing, because we haven't really slowed down.
Correct, and I'm gonna talk about that right here. So some projects, no dollars, some projects, we are looking to hopefully discuss at the next meeting. Can't give totals, but I can give where we're gonna be at. It's kind of been talked about possibly some minor upgrades to City Hall and the community center to be more reflective of the space needed. Fire engine number two. It was on the, it was on the unfunded part of the capital improvement plan, but it, the age is out. It's already exceeded its lifespan on the engine two. We do have, can't talk funds, they're money, but we do have money for that. Public works staff, we have three choices of how we may want to go about. Those three, depending on how we can make it happen and be what's actually out there for us to actually look at. Three choices are looking at just hiring another public work staffer and try to hopefully find, find help and support for Ron. Be, maybe bring somebody else specifically dedicated to wastewater, and look at Ron's role a little differently. Or then still do that director initiative I've been talking about. But when we do that last one, just kind of looking at what the market's going for right now, it may be upwards.
And talk.
Get on down. Perfect. Coal and step will be there, as well as there was an increase to the sheriff's contract a little bit. City Hall roof is a need. Increased marketing material in terms of, and what I mean, marketing, city communications, there's a lot of things we have going out in the next year in terms of public information that may actually need direct door-to-door information. So we want to have, have that in the budget. Utilities are going up double digits for our cost to PGE and Northwest Gas. Water rates, we are talking about water rates. Those figures will be at the next meeting, so the city. And then I know it was discussed the last meeting. Counselor, Drabbin asked the Sheriff's Office what he need from us. And cameras are talked about. I think cameras may be a low-cost solution to help our police force. So I'll actually probably get a low, a low, maybe one or two camera quote to see if that's something we want to do.
And she mentioned cameras at City Hall.
Yeah, well, yeah, City Hall for the, and then I think that's all I have on that. I can't ask what they feel, right? We can, we have dialogue on it.
If they have an overall vision of what they would like to see or a goal.
Yes.
That can be shared. If any of you are wondering why we are doing this.
We know.
The state, and we have to make sure we follow Oregon's very unique budget. So we can talk in very general terms, so I'm very keen at this meeting, so.
So if there's something that hasn't been said by the, so the council, so like I mentioned on Thursday, council sets policy. The council, that's a part of the Budget Committee, sets the budget. So obviously, nothing's come to me, or directives come from the council yet. Outside of some discussions like, hey, let's just finish out the water meters, or let's talk about doing cameras. So if there's anything that's maybe been put in the back burner for a couple of years that maybe we can look at putting in there as a Budget Committee. If there's anything you want to lend your ear to me on, you can email me, call me. We can discuss it now and maybe try to get some minimal buy-in to where there's no official vote or dollars figured out, but.
So just a couple of things here. First of all, I hope Brandon buys you a bottle of wine or something, since you seem to be saving the day a couple of times. From my opinion, I'm here, I know we'll visit in more detail next month, but I don't want to spend any money in City Hall right now. I don't think it makes sense to, the reasons that I heard last time were it being more inviting and things like that, and I just don't think that's a good use of money for a building that down the road is going to have to be placed or significantly renovated. I also don't love the idea that was talked about of having City Council meetings at a place that is not City Hall. That seems very counterintuitive to me, so just starting my opinion out.
Does anybody else want to lend that hand to that opinion?
I completely agree.
My opinion is that some minimal needs to be spent for the professional aspect of this room. I'll just do it at that.
My input. First, I'd like to apologize for being a bit late.
You thought the meeting was at six-thirty, didn't you?
But I showed up. I think, I think it's important that there is a enough facility to, to house the necessary staff and to be able to have a functional work environment so that we can put forth and complete effectively the objectives that are set forth. Okay. I don't mind the thought of, you know, putting some paint on the walls or putting up some new offices, two-by-fours, you know, that's fairly inexpensive. I am a little concerned with having the community center as an extension of City Hall because of the amount of work that facility needs to bring it up to a, a visual perception. And I'm a strong proponent of the concept of competence. You know, if it looks like it's well-run, it probably is. If it is just cluge together, mud against the wall kind of thing, then that's gonna be the perception. So I support, you know, what we can do to be as effective as we can. Okay, and that may be, you know, spending a few bucks here, a few bucks there, okay? Or not, and that's, you know, a group discussion, you know, and decision. But, you know, I, I look around here, and this is also the, you know, the court. You know, and I'm going, really? You know, there's a perception here, you know? If, if you walk into a closet, you don't expect to have a decisions made, okay, that are good for the community, okay? And that's, that's my perception.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to know more about, I mean, I was running into this at the City of Banks too, that they, they were so focused on the growth that they forgot that they need to live somewhere. And so their building is from the original building from nineteen-twenty. Brick and falling apart, and they, they've doing all these upgrades to it, but they're gonna outgrow it as soon as they get one more full-time person. And they're zoning all this land, and they've got all this inventory, but they never thought about where they might go. So I'd want to know what that thought is, right? Because if that thought is not even being had, then I'd rather spend money thinking about that than improving this building. And then hopefully with that thought says, you know, public works can morph into whatever that is, or if we get more, we get another director, administrator, or whatever, that that's kind of considered, especially as you're going that way. It's like, you want to be more in the center of town, kind of well-accessed, rather than on the outskirts where no one knows about you. So I would want to see money spent on thinking of where we'd be going and how that would look and what that cost would be, so we can start saving for that.
Any other projects, any other needs that we can think that maybe I don't see, or the staff doesn't see, or maybe councils hold doesn't see that we can maybe look at?
You know, I see this as the city's home. And when you invite people into your home, you want it to look, I mean, nice. I was shocked the first time I came here for a council meeting, I have to tell you, because I have.
I was shocked the first time I came here for a council meeting, I have to tell you, because I have attended other councils in same-sized cities. That have much better facilities. Now. The facility isn't so much as your, as your perception for the people coming from the outside. You tealize these meetings. People see it. This is not the perception, I think, if we're talking about the growth of Lafayette. That we want people to see. I think we need to really start thinking about what we're going to do, whether it's moving to another facility. Fixing it up, whatever, there are some vacant buildings in this town we could possibly look at if we have some money to get started with. Just my thoughts.
I'd like to see, I, I think like Jamie said, a plan, you know, I'm okay to say, okay, you need some money to. Make some repairs or, or get you to where you need to be, but it, you know, depending on if that's two or three years or. Five to ten years down the road, that's gonna depend on how much money the budget committee, the council's gonna provide. For that, uh, temporary solution. So I'd much rather have a plan and, you know, some stopgap time between. A new facility po- potentially than a, a reader board, for example.
But I don't, and I don't wanna just put a Band-Aid on something that needed certain. You know, where, but at the same time, I understand the whole. If we want businesses to come and do business in our town. What are we projecting?
I don't think businesses care what the instead of City Hall looks like. I think they care about how much money spent on the business. You know, like, people aren't going to buy even the new houses here to drive to them, they have to hit a hundred and sixty different portals. The money is better spent in places that serve all of the citizens instead of the two or three dozen that walk in here every week.
I have to say that to, not to count it out, but to also add that, you know, turnover right now, it's crazy, but. Working environment does matter. So if you're working in an environment that's not functioning, I'm working in an environment right now, twenty-five people in one bathroom. Right, so it's like, that it does matter, it does impacts, you know, how you feel about your work and it's not necessarily the people coming in here. On an infrequent basis, but the people that come here. As part of it.
As far as where the city council sits once a month, if it's functional, we're fine. Like, that's really what I believe. It just needs to be functional. Where we don't need fancy seats for one meeting a month, we need people to be able to drive on smooth streets and.
Might be a little bit of a balance there, because, you know, walking in the building and you're like, okay, these are the people that are, you know, spending my tax dollars. And then noticing that the roof looks like it's leaking. There's a balance there, and that's why.
Just send them over to that new expensive fire station.
Well, they, they kind of quite a bit of money on that fire, from the original plan, yeah. So it's nice looking and it's functional, the building very functional.
I think, I mean, I have, we're focusing a lot on that topic, which I appreciate. I'm the one that brought it up to Brandon. I think there's two subtopics. It's the business visual side, but it's also the functionality of his staff. And that's where it first came with the possibility of moving into City Hall or the community center. Was looking at, you know, I wanna explore every option, not necessarily, you know, what would it take to say yes, and is that a good yes, or is that, I know that.
Then I think we need to be exploring what the reality is of this building. Does it need to be torn down? Is it repairable? Is, are we able to expand it? If I'm gonna work for parking lots or anything, but that's gonna take months. To do, so now that we know that this is important, let's, as a council, be addressing that over this next year, more for next year's budget.
Well, but have some starting money, you can't start.
We have to get that stuff rolling before we can.
Well, with that in mind, I fully, fully support what, um, uh, Jim was saying about, you know, coming up with a plan. Uh, I'm all for a plan. If you don't hang the target on the wall, you're not gonna hit it. You know, and that's, that's what I'm all about.
I think we're all kind of saying.
Yeah, so I think we all know that we need a plan in order to know which budget, so.
Rob, I'll, I'll continue that with city council over the next, over the next year, so.
Can I make one more comment? And it's kind of directed towards you. This plan, I mean, I, I'm sure that any kind of rebuild is gonna be over the million-dollar requirement for voters.
Yeah, so more than that, yeah.
You know, if you, i- i- if, you know, if we're having a hard time convincing Lee, um, which I'm not pointing it out, you know, you specifically. You know, people in this room that have been in here and understand the limitations, we need to find a way to convince and show that need. Of, hey, we need a new building instead of just, oh, they're asking for more money in a bond measure or, or whatever, so.
Was also one of the things why I wanted to look at every option, so that we could share why this was no, why this was no. We tried with this, we tried with what we had, that it wasn't just immediately going to the voters saying, hey, there's some money.
So I think that's kind of helps, that maybe you all have to kind of form your vision of, this is, this is what my staff needs to be, and I've gotten in front for half of that. You know, if you want the services that you expect in town, so.
Haven't there already been done in the fact that they, to like carry into the next building, the old.
Yeah, we can't use that or anything, but so, so you've already done some work toward.
Yes, we have.
Yeah. We can build up.
You can't build up? And then Jamie, I, it seems like years ago, they already had some kind of a design for City Hall. Is that still? So, I mean, that was many years ago, but did they still have that? Is that still something that they?
Records.
Is it, was it on this plot of land? It was attached to the fire station, I think, they, they, together, so.
I think just kind of, but you know, taking what everybody is saying and as somebody who's. Worked in this building every single day for the last twenty years, um. You know, well, I, I appreciate the need for the big picture and to plan and have. A city hall that meets the needs, whether it's ten years or twenty years down the road. I think it's important that people be aware of the conditions that we're working in right now, and we are stretched for storage. We have employees that work in a hallway right next to a bathroom. You know, I'm essentially in a closet. You know.
Be great coming to the council, cause that's some stuff that we don't know.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, you know, I don't think we're asking, you know, for the moon right now, but we are realistic. In the fact that a new city hall is probably a number of years down the road. Because with the current, um, bond payment for the fire station. Asking the voters for more money for a brand-new facility, regardless of whether they think it's needed or not, may be a hard sell. But we can't turn to blind eye to the needs that we have right now. And if we're gonna be in this building, in this location for another five years or ten years, it has to be addressed.
No.
Are any hybrid with officers?
Um, like during, during the weather emergency a few weeks ago, I know like, uh, Jamie and, um, Kevin were able to, but. Yeah, I mean, probably us three are probably the only ones who can probably work remotely, and she'll kill me because she needs to be here, like, should we have to take her all office there? Um, so, but that's only really weather emergency related, everybody else out in the field or whatnot, or you know, we have Miss Tina or our new development department to be here. You know.
So like Ron, he's in the hallway, right? Is that his desk?
Yeah, that's his desk.
Okay, you've got a lobby machine in the hallway and you have to, you have to skinny your way by if somebody's, you know.
Can his stuff move to one of the offices that's being used for storage at the community center? I'm just.
Part of the problem with that is that when you have people who come into the office.
They wanna talk with that, yeah, no, I wanna talk to him. That's why I asked, I knew that there'd be a site that I didn't think of. I mean, the whole idea of remote work or hybrid is great, but in reality. Not when you touch a large portion of what we do involves a direct interaction with the customers. And, um, even just, you know, the records and access to that, um, there's things that. And working collaboratively, you know, I, I also do municipal courts. You know, for security purposes, I can't take that stuff home, that has to be here, so, um.
Apparently, I mean, we can do it a few days here and there, if you're sick, you don't wanna come in, you need to work, you know, work from home, and that's, you know, we, we kind of do it on a, on a as needed basis, but. Um, how about at least I do this? I, I can't talk to figures tonight, but how about I at least bring those figures to the next meeting? And you can at least say, hey, I, I think this is feasible, and if it's not, then we scrap it, and we put that, because we have money towards City Hall. But like Jamie had mentioned, we, we're not gonna look at that until we pay off this, and this, how, how long the bond image, ten years?
It's thirty years.
Thirty years, okay, thirty years. So we probably won't get anything way to halfway through, at least starting the process, so ten years. I'm thinking we'll probably see all the ten to fifteen years.
I'm sorry, have you guys explored the blue building? Okay.
And that's the other side, yeah, so to those, those of you who've made that comment about looking for another existing building. We, uh, there's I think at least three that we've looked at, and the problem with those is none of them were built as office space. They were built more as retail, so each one of those would require ADA improvements. And other structural improvements to make it function as an office space in City Hall. And it's like, okay, well, then once again, you're dumping hundreds of thousands of dollars into a building that still is. Not right, so, uh, the blue building on the corner, because it's two-story. Um, and you've got those regulations, you know, the upstairs is not accessible to anybody that, you know, would. For ADA, so are we gonna spend however much to put an elevator in? I mean, that doesn't really make sense.
Okay, I just wonder.
Have explored those options.
I think your idea is good.
Yeah.
So my only concern with what was discussed about, or around some of this room, like this is the only room you can take to make offices, you're already. Court still has to happen here? I mean, th- there's preference that the city council meetings happen here from, from some people. Um, to me, you know, while we're figuring things out, that's not as big of a deal, but I, I understand. But I heard court has to stay here, and as soon as you start carving off offices, it's not like you take off two feet at a time, you're coming in. What's?
Well, in the nature of court, how you set it up is a little different than like for a city council or by a commission, so, um. It is the rough idea that we had worked at with creating two offices. In this area here where you guys are sitting would still leave like this half of the room, and potentially could still. Be set up, you know, would be rows of seats, kind of like what we do now for council, so it's a little bit different. So it, it would be tight, not obviously the, the best option, but it could still work.
Let's brainstorm idea here. Portable bullpen, uh, like the, the, uh, like the desk that mounted on bolt down. So you could have workers with bullpen open seating here, and the bullpen bolt down the wall, you can still do your city council.
So, so workspace during the day. I mean, even like I'm looking at that desk thing there, just cause it's a desk, you know, so either the desk where even that much space. Yes, I get it, we're tight here, but if, you know, a curtain or whatever can go in front of it, and they've got their, you know, just their desk space, at least it gives.
Well, not, not everybody needs post office, like most offices throughout the country, but workspaces or bullpens or cubicles.
I think she was saying the curtain for when we have.
Or not, the curtain to like block off their desks during council meetings.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking about like desks, like you generally just fold them.
They have them, they're, they're very efficient, you're right.
Well, they've also got the, you know, the accordion style thing, the room dividers. I mean, so if you have them open from there, you can push them into the, you know, you have to carve out. But, and then I think even if, if we did have a curtain, it'd look nice, you know, um, and cover stuff up, so. Some of that like flex space solution.
Thank you, flex. I couldn't think of that, it's like joint use.
All right, well, we got a couple of, we'll bring out to the next meeting, so we have a couple. Thank you all so much for that. Anything else on projects or anything before?
I think, well, I mean, since I've been on budget committee, we just, we've talked about. The rate study for water and getting that pushed through, but I think. A lot of the assets that are gonna fail first, so the ones we don't see in the ground. I know that you're required to have future planning for them, but not a lot of cities are great about sticking to that plan, so just. Making sure that there's enough projects to keep, so what we're supposed to do to try and replace things before we get to emergencies. Cause I know that this.
Be more proactive than reactive.
In this city particular waters, you know, it's like we just get caught up ahead and I go so far with one instance that. Um, making sure that all gets incorporated.
Thank you, sir.
When is the last, when was the last master plan, the twenty-year plan?
For, well, we have master plans for, for all, for, um, water, wastewater, uh, parks, transportation and safety. Um, and I think they all fit into the mold of what a, a comp plan would be. Most comp plans have smaller sections, but, but every master plan would wind up to a comp plan here, just about, um. I think from, and I can be mistaken, don't quote me. Let me get with Jim and Gordon, but I think there's something currently we're working on. Um, that was asked from Preston like a year or two ago, so let me, let me verify on that, and I'll get you that one hundred percent.
I feel like they're coming up, cause they're all usually once, they're more or less together, you know, you do it back-to-back for several years. But I wanna say that they're coming up.
Well, I know we're, we're addressing the SDCs and, uh, there's something else on the red, oh, we updated the water plan to include the reservoir. I think that was the most recent one. But I'll double, I'll double check it out, and I'll, and I'll either send you an email or I'll bring it to the next meeting.
So does that close us out with three B?
So we're saying orientation and discussion on budget committee process for April meeting, so I will.
Hey, um, in the second handout, you have the budget process. And most of you have seen this before, so it's redundant, but this is for the new members, the type of funds that we have here, um, what, the enterprise funds. Um, trust agency reserve fund, um, cash carry forward all those items, the budget requirements. Um, how that's laid out, and then local budget, budget, uh, Oregon budget one-on-one. We have on here, it tells you what is the budget, hopefully everybody knows the budget when they're here today. Um, what the, uh, how, how we do transfer supplemental budgets. Um, why we have to have a budget committee, budget committee meetings and members, um. And pretty much a checklist on doing, uh, what you do to make a successful, um, budget committee member. Um, so the plan for April is, um, so over the next month, with the discussions we had tonight, with some of the things we laid out for you. We will bring that, um, we'll bring that first recommended budget to you on the seventeenth. That should be a part of the packets that we sent out a week before, or, okay. So we should have that ready for you, so you can kind of decipher that, look at it, um, and then kind of go from there, um. City council sets, oh, the seventeen, and the twenty-four, those will be at six P M. Let's just wanna make it a one, one P M.
No.
Fine by me. Um, so after the six P M, um, obviously those, those meetings will be a little bit longer. So, but we wanna make, we wanna try to be, uh, benefits of everybody's time, well, budget committee and staff. So, um, just a reminder, this isn't, um, to go about it nicely, this isn't nitpicking every single line item by line item. We need to think of funds and overall picture and how is this aligned with the mission, the vision statement of Lafayette. Um, is everything we're doing going to that vision statement? So if it's like, oh, there's, you know, forty-five dollars on gas, but we should make it thirty. We're here to look at big picture items, and if we need to tweak things here and there, that's what the second, that's what the second meeting will be for. Hey, here's what we, here's what we did, here's what we revised, any kind of look and feel things, we'll come at that second meeting, and then hopefully, um, uh. And then I'm hoping if all goes well, um, we can maybe try to do like a media wrap-up, kind of like in this January's every year, or December, hey, this is where we're at. Here's when, if we need to start looking at next year, we can kind of have these discussions throughout the year, um, unless council wants to do more than a, a, a follow-up. Um, unless council wants to do more than a, a, a follow-up meeting, that'll be completely up to them and the budget committee, but, um. That's where the goal be for, uh, for April. Um, you ever miss anything, Jimmy, on that? So, like I said, like, I'll reiterate on Thursday. Budget committee does not set policy, that's the council, now, if there's something you're thinking of that we wanna bring to the council, we, we have two months or so. Uh, before we can really make it part of the budget, or three months, um, so, um, just bear in mind.
Thank you for this information.
Oh, no problem, though, Jamie, Jamie did most of the work, so, thank you so much. So, uh, I just wanna make sure you all have this, so we start looking at that, you kinda have, kind of foresight into that.
I had a couple of questions, um, so you had said there are specific things to the budget, certain rules. Is that because this is a city council work session and not a budget meeting specifically, or is that if we were in a, a budget meeting, we still couldn't talk about certain things?
No, and within the budget committee meeting, then it's open.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Oregon budget law requires that the formal budget committee meetings, there's a formal process that you have to do, which includes like the notifications.
Okay.
Publishing with it, like.
Right, and, and then the chair would, instead of the mayor, okay, okay.
And you have to actually have the budget document to present, so that's why we can't really talk about the numbers for next fiscal year or specifics. Because that budget document has not been created, so we can't be talking about things that potentially may be in the budget next year specifically.
Now, if you had, if you had a dollar question, once this meeting is over, hopefully not, but, you say, hey, Brandon, can we talk some, if anybody here wants to talk about dollar. Dollar amounts, we could talk before the next week, I'm talking to you, hey, Brandon, what do you think about the city hall renovation? Um, I can let you know that number, I can let you all know the number today, so if you have any questions before the next meeting, call me, reach me, text me, whatever. And I can do my best to answer those to you, if you have a, a question about programming a policy, you can reach out to the council or myself, so.
So, uh, the next meeting then is April seventeenth?
Yes, Monday.
Time will be presented with the budget, and, okay.
And then there'll be a follow-up meeting the next Monday?
My plan is to get it to you ahead of time, so you'll have time to read.
Yeah, cuz I didn't have the seventeenth on my calendar, and that's the first time, I, I had this twenty-fourth and the twenty-seventh. So. Okay, seventeenth and twenty-fourth, okay.
So, a follow-up to that, um, I think, so, I really appreciate all the discussion about projects, I think it's been better. Than I've ever experienced at a party, at least with asking for input and talking about projects, kinda to help you get an idea as you're preparing your budget. Um, and I think that was kinda the intention of wanting to call this meeting. Um, and it was thrown out, uh, at a previous meeting, to maybe have the budget meeting meet quarterly or even, you know, a couple times a year. To, so it's, it's fresh, you know, it doesn't go nine months or ten months between when you meet and you say, okay, let's look at the budget, all right. Uh, pass and then do it again two weeks later. If, if the budget meeting were to meet in, say, September, October, without a, I mean, we would just be going on. Budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we could start talking like big picture items, but not figures or, hey, what do we wanna look preparing for? Next year, is that the same sort of thing?
Yeah, well, remember, you, the council does big picture, so right now, as you, you have the budget committee hat on. You can talk about how, how we can help fund the council priorities, now, if you say, hey, um, September, I wanna do a meeting with the budget committee, we call a special meeting or a work session. Hey, we're really thinking about moving forward on, um, uh, five new vehicles, or, you know. Something, you can start talking, hey, how we think about this, how you feeling about this, but at the end of the day, policy and vision and.
So it's, it's set, it's set by the council, but I think the budget committee should be able to propose policies to the council. Or say, hey, this is how we wanna use some of the funds, that, that was kind of the idea behind having more than.
So, maybe if I can, I'll direct you, if you guys are page by, there's questions and answers. And some of those things are highlighted in there, and it gets a little bit more into what really is the role of the budget committee. Um, so while anybody, any resident citizen of the city can make a proposal to a city council member and say, hey, I would like to see this. Program, I would like to see this thing implemented, the specific programs and policies, as Brandon was saying. Is that did not fall under the purvey of the budget committee. So, not that those things can't be discussed, but generally, if you're gonna have a mid-year or whatever. During the course of the year with the budget committee, it would be more of informational purposes to say, you know, here's where we are today. You know, we were on track, and then, yes, if you wanna talk about some of those bigger visioning. Um, you know. I can't think of some off the top of my head, but more of a future visioning for the city, you can do that. But the role of the budget committee isn't really too deep into the, the programs and the things that the city does.
But could they have a vision, uh, meeting with the residents?
So, so what I was thinking, once, once the, you know, it's gonna be the, this upcoming meeting or the May meeting. But after we get the, after we get our first budget as a family knocked out together, I was gonna do a strategic visiting session with the council, just, oh, probably like a Saturday. And just, you know, maybe over a couple hours, and talk about goals for the next three to five years. I would at that time say, hey, let's invite members of the planning commission and the budget committee to be there, so they say what, where they're at, because. Okay, where we at, where we at, then if you sat there at the meeting, hey, I really don't like that, but I think it'd be great for this, that'd be a conversation you can have. Then that could be a base of point for that, the council could bring it up at the next meeting, um, anybody who can be, you know. When, when it comes to the strategic visioning thing, but it's gonna be a council meeting, so.
Everybody move then? Yep.
And I don't have to do a motion, right?
All in favor? All those? Meeting adjourned.
Everybody should have a packet, there's extra packets to start.